Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Number one, apologies, Mia.
Yeah, we've got ACFO Finn O'Donoghue, ACFO Christian Hardfield, ACFO Brian Thompson and Kate Harrow.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest. Okay, for those already noted, I don't have any announcements. But there will be some announcements coming through in the chief's report. So we'll wait until we get to that. Point four, matters to be raised from Commissioner's subcommittees. No, moving on. I tried to receive the minutes of the Board of Commissioners from 31 July, starting at page five. So we're going through and pick up any matters arising, so page five, six, seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11, 12. And so, Mia. We agree? Those are correct? Yep?
Great.
Okay, moving on then, strategic change transformation culture from 16th May, page 15. And page 16, 17, and 18, 19, 20, and 21. We agree? You those minutes please? Yep. Thank you. And finance audit committee, page 23. And then 24, page 25, 26, 27, and 28. You agree those minutes, please? All agree, thank you. And update on outstanding actions on page 29. Anything there? Yes?
So the purpose of these agenda items is to be able to keep a track of actions agreed, isn't it?
Yes.
To follow those, nothing is lost. So I think we can do, you know, that's done very clearly on first and the third one. With O213 6.1, the efficiency of that.
Yeah.
That just doesn't tell us where we're going with that, does it? You know, how is that going to be actually, where is that going to be picked up? And I think, and I think, I think that's, that's the purpose of these particular agenda items, is so that we can keep track of, and there is a clear identifiable route for actions being taken, discussions had.
Yes.
And I think.
Kirsty, can I take the blame for that word then? Because that, that entry was created by me before the Finance and Audit Committee sent. When actually we went through, I think, the budget, the, the revenue monitoring report. And it was agreed then, there was an action that flew from that, and this hasn't been updated yet to reflect that. So I will update it. But it was basically, I think, at that meeting, I think it was Carl who chaired that meeting. Says that we would have a report coming to Board of Commissioners about what the format of an efficiency project would look like and how that would be funded and when that would take place. I think that's all, that's your, your view as well.
Yes. Shall we bring in, yes, Carl, please?
Yeah, Amanda's stolen my thunder really, and sorry, Kirsty, I hadn't clocked the action slightly different. So the last Finance Committee, as Amanda says, we discussed the fact that we need both an efficiency and effective programme of work. But prior to that, we need clarity on how we're going to do that. So the first paper will be the how we're going to do that programme of work. And then discussion with ELT more broadly around right, when starting and what that looks like, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. It's, it's just being absolutely clear in these records. If that's being picked up by a certain committee and how that is going to flow through, that's all. It's just for transparency and clarity.
Just a moment.
Yes.
When it talks about on the third one, page three, the important thing in the agenda for DSC today, which is strategic performance indicators, are they specifically referenced? I don't think they are. I think we'd asked if we brought forward from the December, because I think in the previous meeting we said it's too long to wait till December. I love it now. It talks about the beginning of the agenda and I just see where it is. I don't think it's on the result, I guess. Somebody to put that right.
Are you content for that to be done now, House of Commissioners?
If that's the consensus. Yeah, I think. I think it's fine to do some of that without a committee, but given that these are performance indicators which are pretty important in terms of assurance and scrutiny, they would have to come back here at some point for some form of ratification and agreement.
Yeah.
I'll take that as that.
Cool.
So it can go through another, you know, another public meeting and then come back here for ratification?
And we can do the work as soon as it's possible, that it will breed amongst ourselves, lined up by us, and then formally bring it back to the next committee for formal endorsement.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Thank you. Yeah, okay, thanks for it, which is, I mean, you know, the high range, it absolutely emphasizes that this is a really important part of the pack, after the outstanding actions, because it keeps us focused and keeps us on track. And is our audit thread.
And Chair, as I discussed with Carl at the Finance Audit Meeting, for the purpose of the minutes, I found sometimes things in the minutes which aren't necessarily highlighted as an action.
Yeah.
So I think as we go along, if we can get better at saying, this is an action for the minutes, then we, there's less challenges with seeing those.
And I, I think, if I can pick up on that one, you know, we have had discussions about different formats for reports and reporting. And I think it's really important because, you know, one way I've seen it, I'm sure others have, is on the right hand side of the page, no actions.
Yes.
And it's just maybe, it then makes it clearer for everyone.
Of course it does.
And, and also easier for us to be able to get back as well.
Yes, okay, we're, we're, I'll work with Mia around that.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, moving on then to Chief Fire Officer Organizational Update, Finn, over to you.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I'm going to paraphrase the whole of my paper, obviously, you can see that in print. Big picture things from here, we are stabilising and strengthening the leadership at the top of the organisation. So we welcome Amanda Brown to the organisation, Director of Service Support and Monitoring Officer. And thank you very much for the work you've done so far, because you are ripping through all sorts of things, which is, which is very, very welcome.
Amen to that.
We have appointed a deputy chief, so that's Adam Openshaw. He'll be arriving on the first of December. And we've also appointed two ACFOs, so Matt Jones from South Wales and also Martin Ward, Martin Ward White, who is from West Midlands Fire and Rescue Service. Now, the really important thing about this, not only are we stabilising and strengthening the leadership at the top of the organisation, this will, this will allow permanence in, in post to trickle down throughout the organisation, which is a really important thing we need to do. On the operation.
Sorry to cut across you, but that was a particular issue that came out of the Fennel Morris Report.
Correct.
The permanence is absolutely key.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's, that's what we, we want to do, is to try and, try and stabilise right away through the organisation. Wildfire, so my paragraph 2.1, I highlight particularly, we've obviously had a big wildfire year this year. We have been supporting elsewhere, so in Devon and also in Yorkshire. But we had our own major incident, a really complex wildfire situation. I can't go into all of the details in this means, but, but it was near Bryn Mawr and, and there was some pretty, a pretty important infrastructure that we had to protect. And we did so, and I'd like to commend members of South Wales Fire and Rescue Service and all of our partners for rapid action. At one point, we had over 70 people in an SCG, which I think says something about that, that, that response. I was really pleased with the way that went, both in the SCG and also out on the ground as well. Moving now to my paragraph 4.2. At the time of writing this, of the 82 recommendations from the Fennel Morris Report, we had, he had completed 64 recommendations, which I think is a really big step forward. When I arrived in service, there were circa 20 that had been completed. So I'm really pleased with the team, what they're doing there. Some of those still need the final, final tick off with the data collection, but, but that's a very significant move. And then hot off the press, and not in the, in the pack, we're now the world champions in vehicle explication. The Bridge End team won a world championship out in Croatia. And I think that's really important. It's not, this isn't just about competing, it's about making our roads in, in South Wales safer. And the information that they bring back from these competitions is, is amazing. I was down at the NFCC this week and I had two different chiefs come up to me and say, you are just outstanding in that field, which I think is a really nice thing to have other fire services.
Well, after everything we've been through, to have that kind of recommendation for the team and for the, the whole world, which really is excellent. And just on that, I have written to the Cabinet Secretary and asked her if she could make herself available. Because I think, you know, to have a photograph with the team and to come and thank them in person. I don't know how far that's going, but I'll ask Mia later today to contact her team in, in the centres. But I spoke to her personally and she sends her personal congratulations.
She has sent a letter to me and I've forwarded that to the team as well.
Yeah.
So, thank you. And then on positivity and changing cultures, had a really positive day yesterday. We had the honours and awards last night, attended by the lieutenant and Commissioner around the way. And it, it was really touching actually, and we reshaped it, it's smaller, it's more convivial, had some really good feedback from it. And also yesterday, we had, we filled the canteen and, and we had the Macmillan cake event. And we raised over 650 quid for charity. And it was great to have the whole of the headquarters in there engaging. It just shows how important social events, traditions and, and communicating and taking a little bit of time out for the time to bring people together. And how important that is in re-energising the culture. So I was really pleased with yesterday, it was great.
Just on a personal note, I was driving up towards Everveil yesterday and just at Abercarron, there was an RTA. And the police were there and then I thought, I'm sure I'll lot to be here any, and there they were, you know, two, two trucks coming down the road. And it, it just, you know, that, that kind of immediacy and, and bearing in mind the, the competition, I was thinking, wow, you know, we're the world experts in this, let's sort this.
I was at a RTC this morning on the, on the M4, for example, Bridge End, it was great. Makes you, makes you so proud, doesn't it?
It does indeed.
And that's me complete, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Kirsty.
Thank you, Chief, for the report and, and I'd like to add my own congratulations to the, the team and to record our thanks to all of those that are involved in the fire in Bryn Mawr, it's a really big operation. And grateful to everybody who worked so hard on that. If I may, there's just a couple of questions around the report. So first of all, paragraph 1.2, discipline and grievance. And we know that discipline and grievance issues and how that they are appropriately dealt with by the organisation did feature in the Morris Report. Justice delayed is just denied for all parties that they find themselves in this process. And it's really great to see that the professional standards unit, it's quite shared, proceeding now at pace. But like, did you tell us when you anticipate that system will be fully functional? Because it's, there's no time scale in the report. And then secondly, a similar, a similar question to point to risk. I know that this has been a priority that you've since made to the organisation, maybe to appropriately handle and mitigate and manage risk within the organisation. And it says here about the onboarding of our risk contractor. And just wanted to give some extra details there about what can we expect out to this piece of work? And again, when can we expect to see the results of, of this particular literature?
So I'll take question two, and that'll give Alison a bit of time. And then I'll ask Alison to respond to question one, the, the first question, because that's her, her area. So Resilium is the contractor, they're bringing in a, in a system called the Bo-TIME Risk Analysis System. We actually have already kicked off a Bo-TIME Risk Analysis System, it's pretty raw, and they've already come in and they've already started, started bringing that into play. What it does, it's particularly useful for examining risk to life situations. So the kind of thing we get out on the, on the instinct round. But it also nips in and starts to feed your higher level risk profiles. Now, what, what you will see as commissioners is, it won't actually change all that much, but it's all of the evidence base that you build underneath it. And the, the Bo-TIME uses a specific software and you basically put lots and lots of different software in. It does some calculations for you and it makes more of a science out of an art of risk analysis. So it allows you to pictorially view your, your risks and it allows you to see lots of the gaps. So really useful, particularly risk to life, but as I say, it does, it does lead into the higher risk levels.
When, when will we anticipate that process coming to an end and that really then influencing next steps?
So they're still going through their, their analysis process at the moment to see what, what is the whole of our risk mitigation system look like. So I can't really give you the dates on that at the moment, but they're in and they're already working.
Okay. So perhaps we could have updates outside of the meeting?
Yeah, that would be good.
So I'll, I'll make sure there's an update on that in my next, in my next report.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief, please?
Alison's going to.
Oh, I almost, I, I, I almost didn't get away with it, didn't I?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so in terms of the professional standards unit, we have APSU currently, that is staffed by temporary resource. So what we are doing is we're moving that temporary resource to more permanent structure. And we are looking to outsource the investigation element of that resource. And we're working with finance colleagues at the moment on the costs for the outsourcing of the investigation element. And they are looking quite significant currently, so we're working through that. But the, the model, the PSU model is there, so we're not halting any investigations, they are continuing. But the plan is to make the unit more permanent. What I can say is we've seen a massive downturn in our discipline and grievance cases, which is really good news. And I think is a reflection of the work that we're doing in terms of our programme of upscale.
Yes.
The Taking Care of Behaviours Programme has been, is, is in train, rolling out across the organisation. So we've currently got eight discipline cases as compared to 53 discipline in the last financial year and 20 grievances. So it's been a downturn.
That's significant and something to, to note of worth and value and a real example of, as you say, you know, the work that's gone in to other areas in order to minimise what was a really difficult area for us. Well done, Diane. Okay, have I missed anyone on that? No? Okay, anything further? I'll be all right. You okay? Okay, right. Onto reports or decisions, so the Welsh Language Standards Annual Monitoring Report. Wayne?
Yes, yes, that was a minute. Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, this is an, an annual report, as you mentioned, under Welsh Language Standards. We have, we have to produce this report under the Welsh Language Wales Measure 2011. And it has to contain obviously certain types of information, so there are 150 Welsh Language Standards that we have to adhere to. We manage them locally on a standard to standard basis. This is obviously a public facing report, which has got some really high level summaries of how, how we are complying. So the 150 are divided into four broad areas, so your service delivery standards and their, what you, how you comply outwardly to the public. You've got your policy making standards and how you consider policies and how you consider Welsh language in your policy decision making. You've got, you've got your operation, operational standards, a lot of them are internal administration processes and what we offer our staff. And the report, as we go through it, it has to contain certain, certain sections. And the report, as I said, is just a summary of, of what we're doing, what we have done in the year and how we do comply with some numerical information. Some of the main things we've achieved in the last 12 months, we have recruited a Welsh Language Administrative Officer to try and, to try and bolster what we can and can't offer. Not individuals, as, as the main focus has been obviously the use of Welsh internally and trying to promote informal groups to have people to come and come out of their shell a little bit and learn in a safe environment and try and, try and create a bilingual workplace. And I have had them going around certain areas, looking at compliance in terms of posters and trying to go that extra mile. The service business language is English, but to try and move things into bilingual wherever we can is obviously a focus. And obviously talks then about what we're, what we're trying to achieve going forward. So obviously we are looking at devising a Welsh language strategy, if we're being completely honest, from a, from a Welsh language point of view. To the, to the service delivery side, to the outside, we are, we are wholly bilingual service. Anything you need from the service, you can receive it via phone, writing, social media. And I know the Welsh Language Commission has done, has undertaken some independent audits. It was actually quite complimentary of all public services based on the, on what they've, what they've looked at so far. The areas of work for us, I think, is more staff and internal, I think, obviously with the business language being, being English. I think we do comply, but it's obviously more on a needs must be, and it's must if people request it more. So I think our proactive offer of Welsh to staff, I think is certainly an area I want, I want to supercharge. I think if people want to learn Welsh or people want something in Welsh, documents are available in Welsh. I just, I think we should go that extra mile, really make it something a bit more proactive than we can have. But like I said, the report just has the information in, it said public facing report, so it doesn't delve into finer details of the standards again, as it's 150 of them. And you're probably going to that level of detail, it would be quite difficult. So it, it is a standard report, it does talk about main achievements and things we have and haven't achieved. But it was just for a decision today, again, it gets, it needs to be published by, on Monday, so any, any queries, I can, I can address them today.
Thank you, Wayne. It's, it's a well presented report and vision is very good as well. I, you know, that's, I think, when people are looking at stuff, because they don't, people don't always say, I'm not in. But you've got the essential stuff here and again, very visual. I'm glad to see Sally Marley's here. In the favour of mine. 30, there we are. Okay, any comments, please, Kirsty?
Thank you. Thanks, Wayne. And I, I appreciate that this is an open document and I agree with Adele, if I'm looking at public facing documents, that's was probably better, it's very, very engaging, as we take things they've, you know, through some information. I guess though, from an internal perspective, it's like, what does this annual report really tell us about our work on where that privilege within the service? And what do we need to do as a result of that? I guess, I guess for me, that then leads us to page 81 really. And I appreciate that in outward facing document, you really outline what you're seeking to achieve. But I do wonder what are the aspects coming from this area? And actually, how will, what will success look like to us in, in this field? And I guess we'll wait to see the strategy for that, won't we? Because then we can have some measurable targets about what we're aiming to do and then we can hold ourselves to account for.
Yeah, completely agree with you. So the, again, with this report, I agree with you completely in terms of public facing. So I've seen some other versions, they did a bit of benchmarking when I looked at other organisations. They, they would do so even less, they refined it down to the absolute musts, whereas I think I've tried to add in there additional information. But I completely agree with you, I think in, certainly in house internally and possibly to yourselves in it, by a different mechanism. We look at the, obviously the 150 at the moment to start compliance wise, because again, there are some of them that we are, we are performing very well and so, by others maybe, maybe not. I think obviously our performance management framework coming up, I think this is an area, I think, where we've got some really good measurable information. I will be able to show you going forward in terms of progress in this area. And like I said, certainly initially in terms of the standards, there are some, if you look at them in a red amber green, which, which I do have locally. Some of them very green, some of them, I think in the amber area, some of them. And obviously the other thing for me as well is compliance is obviously there at the moment as well. So this report will show you what we have to do, but actually I think as an aspiration, we should be able to, I'd like to be able to sell a little bit more the proactive. But in all honesty, I think in terms of energy focus, in the current climate, we're in Welsh language probably hasn't, like I said, maintaining compliance has probably been in, in a state of where, where I've been able to achieve at the moment. There's something I certainly want to put a bit more focusing going forward, but some metrics, I agree with you in terms of progress in the area, I think I need to work on. Outside of this report, which I can, I think hopefully I'll feed into the performance management framework.
Yes, thank you, Wayne. I really appreciate that. As I said, it's about having the right information in the right format and the right, at the right time. One of the things I'm particularly interested, and maybe when you're considering what performance management looks like. One of the things I'd be interested is understanding, you know, our levels of assurance around a proactive offer. So on page 57, you know, we've got the stats there in terms of what we are delivering through the medium of Welsh to our public. And we said at the bottom, ensure that the offer delivering community risk reduction, I tell you, which is proactively presented. Do we know that? Do we know whether it is being proactively, we're making those choices? Or are we defaulting to delivering some of this stuff with me in English? And I know that many people would say, well, what's the issue? You know, it's doing the activity is more important. But, you know, we know for some of our community, especially given the profile of people who are most at risk, the ability to do that through your first language, if you're an elderly person, you know, and, and your first language is Welsh, you're much more likely to engage in that process and engage in that process successfully if you're able to have that service through the medium of your own first language. And so I just, when you're looking at the four days, it'd be really useful to have whether we're really auditing, whether we are proactively offering Welsh or whether people have to chase us for a Welsh service. I can see that we're doing it when we're asked, but there is a difference between being offered and asking. But that's something to bear in mind if you're developing a new suite of metrics.
I appreciate that. I guess, I think a lot of it is depending on where the ask is coming from and how we're offering these out. So I know a lot of our, particularly our home safety checks, coming through the telephone line, we obviously do have bilingual operators there, they do have a script. So there's an element of the script that does say, would you like your check in Welsh? So and obviously if you take the foregone, or you make the foregone in Welsh, obviously then that, that will lead itself to an easier conversation. But you're right, there may be other avenues where these come in. I probably need some assurances on every single one of those.
And I'm just, you know, picking up on our same page. Now I'm thinking about it, the, you know, key stage three, key stage four deliveries. Well, you know, we've got several Welsh medium centre schools, one about five miles away, another one about eight miles away, loads encarded, you know. So there should be some gap there that could be filled, the delivery to our Welsh medium schools in Welsh.
Yeah, I'd like, thank you for that.
And Carl, please.
Just to save the minutes, he's had to leave to go to another meeting, maybe why his hand was up, I don't know, whether he was going to ask a question.
Yeah, I was going to say, he looks very different. Very arbyan. Okay, yes, I, he's, he's multitasking today, I mean, so that's, yeah, that's why I like subscript caring. But I'm doing my best, even if I forgot, I'll go back to Alison. It's going to keep me on my toes. Okay, so that's the report for decision, everyone. Are we, we have to break the conference, yes? Yes. Okay, page two, report on draft proposed strategic themes and objectives, way back to you again.
That's me again. Thank you very much, Chair. So this is a report on the draft proposed strategic themes and objectives for 26 and 27, which does seem a very long way away. But obviously as commissioners are aware, under the local government Wales measures, there's nine, we have to produce two annual reports. You have your strategic improvement plan, that's the forward facing report on 31 of March, which you will have approved. And the next one is the, is the Services Annual Improvement Plan, which is the stage two plan, which will be published by the 31st of October. The reason this report comes to yourselves at this point is the annual improvement plan stage two is the first leap off point to consult in a statutory way with regards to our annual improvement objectives for next year. So 12 week statutory annual consultation is, is launched within the, within the annual improvement plan. So as part of that, we've, we've obviously have done some free consultation for good practice. Rather than go and ask, you like these objectives that we've come up with? We've obviously undertaken some consultation with some key stakeholders for over a three week period. And that report will be on, is appendix two, which we include again, it's as part of the planning process. We take some full frank feedback on board and I'll feed it into the planning process. We've additionally looked at obviously the chief strategy, HMICFRS reports, we've looked at well being and future generations act. We've tried to take all the things we should be doing, we've consulted with the internal departments. And what's that, that's resulted in then is appendix one, which is a consultation should be launching, hopefully. which is a consultation should be launching hopefully in line on the thirty-first of October with the annual improvement plan. Um. Again, we have eight strategic themes, uh which are hopefully our themes will be fit for purpose for the foreseeable future, because obviously they are the 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 main direction of travel. But again, the annual improvement objectives that are the statutory requirement need a little bit more detail around the the things we're going to really supercharge in the year and drive going forward. So as part of the consultation, uh as sorry, the annual improvement plan at the back half of the report. Again, the majority of the reports are the backward look the previous year. We we talk about the we launched the obviously, the big themes are already launched, but within there, we give the and the communities the things we think we should be focusing on. And our role then is to launch the consultation, but obviously to take some final views on board, which again is our statutory requirement. And that paper will be brought back to yourselves in in January or February to try and really galvanise what our annual improvement objectives are. So with this paper, commissioners, the recommendations are, or the ask from yourselves, is to approve the draft strategic themes and objectives are in appendix one right for publication in a consultation document that'll be published on the first of October. So these are the things you'd be asking of public, these are, you know, themes, these are the things we're focusing on. And obviously, we're asking for additional delegation to the Assistant Chief Fire Officer, Service Support slash Monitoring Officer, and possibly myself to review and refine the draft strategic themes for publication. So obviously, if we do ask uh any major things that 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 turn up between now and the thirty-first of October, obviously, an informal discussion with yourself, we could weave that into the consultation. Again, there is there is a whole month before then. So it's over to yourselves, but I'm happy to take any questions at this point.
Um. Thank you, Wayne. Before I I pass it out, my first question is, how do we ensure that we can reach as many people as possible to engage with? Because, you know, an awful lot of work has gone into it. You've just detailed it, you know, some summarily, but, you know, there's a lot of work gone on behind this. And how do we reach out and how do we ensure that, you know, we get a variety of responses? It's a difficult one, and, you know, I'm not expecting any easy answers, but I need to answer the question.
No, it's a very fair question. I think obviously we've got a head of comms and engagement on the on the online there. And I think my my team certainly was relieving it to to Rian's team for this again, for their expertise. Like I said, it's it having a consultation is is all well and good. Like I said, I'm I'm content with the content. But I think now it's the fact of packaging the content for the audience, getting it out there. And that's where I think the merger of skills comes in. So certainly with Rian, I've been in role now and and understanding, getting into real grips with the service and and certainly switching a lot of those stakeholders on and and doing a lot of the work in advance. I'm hoping I'd be passing my teams, well, we'd get my team to work with Rian's team to try and move that a bit further. So um. Sort of real.
Yeah, Rian, have you got something you can add to that, please?
Yes, absolutely, Chair. Thank you. And thank you, Wayne. We've been doing a lot of work on the framework on how we engage, and it's really important that we don't just expect people to come to us. So we go to where people are to engage them on their terms, as they were, and that gets a much better um uh level of level of input and um quality of conversation. So that's the approach that we look to take. So we'd look to go to where we're already having conversations with people, understand the gaps that we've got, and then find those and go to those as well.
Okay, thank you. Kirsty and then pitch. Is it is yours on consultation page?
Uh, oh. I've only got one observation on consultation, the other will be on the strategic objectives.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so it would be, yeah, on the consultation page nine to eight. There's on the second table, this standing on respondent, so I spell checked.
None of my items. I didn't write a spell check in this place.
Respondents, spell. I know you put these in occasionally, just to see what. And also the last question you asked. Do you want to go first on the street?
Sure. Um. So any questions on the bottom of page eighty-eight? Talk about, do these objectives represent the work of the sailors in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? And um, I appreciate the work that has gone into it, and I got uh I got no issues at all with the strategic themes being absolutely what we would want them to be. But I just, maybe it's the language, and maybe I'm missing something here. So I, well, I'm, you know, open to being shot down by everybody if I've got the wrong end of the stick. But we take, we go across from the strategic things to proposed objectives, and the question is, do these objectives represent the work? I just wonder whether these are objectives or really what these are, are steps or actions that we may take to reach an objective. And I, maybe it's the wording, but I'm not convinced that what we want to say, that our annual improvement plan will be to review the effectiveness and efficiency of community safety fire checks. Our objective, I would say, perhaps would be to um cut the number of people who are dying in fires, and we will do that by ensuring that we have a top drawer, first class community face safety fire check system. And one of the things that we may do to get us to that is to review it. But I just, and I'm not convinced that's an objective. I'm, I think what the bullet points are are steps or actions that might help you achieve your objective, but I'm just a bit and a bit non-pleased really about these being our objectives. They seem a bit, if I'm honest, a bit mealy mouthed and a bit not really stressed stretching and pushing us. Maybe it's because of where I've come from. Review in certain circles is a stopgap to get you to say something, but without committing you achieving very much. So maybe it's just the world that I've come from. Um.
Yeah.
The question for me is, as a result of this, is the so what question? So under protection, sorry, I'm picking on those because I know them the most, Mike. And so the detective. Review and improve business face safety fire processes, procedures and systems. We need to do that.
Yeah.
Absolutely need to do it. But the question I would ask if I was a member of the public is, so what? So what? They've reviewed it, and what does that mean for me? If I'm a business officer, what does that mean for me that South Wales Fire and Safety have reviewed their procedure? So I think these are actions, but I'm not sure they're objectives. But I'm willing to be shot down if I misinterpret it.
Right, I take that I take that in board. Absolutely. I think we have just focused on, yeah, the what the what the things, what do we do in rather than the what we want out of it. Um. I can certainly, this is this is the majority of what we've, so we've we've obviously taken in the internal strategies and action plans, and these, as I said, these are the things, but you're right, it doesn't have the what doing this will achieve, the what doing this will.
Yeah, but our objectives, what is our objective in the field of prevention? What is our objective as a service in the end of response? Well, these are things, these are actions that might get us to achieving the objectives, but I'm not convinced that I would want to go out as a service with these as our objectives.
Yeah, that's.
If I'm late to the day in the conversation.
No, it's absolutely fine. And that's that's probably the 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 best part we're bringing in with with this amount of time. Obviously, we do have, we do have obviously a a full month to work on these. So I'm I'm quite happy to take that away and to to change the industry.
So we can, yeah, because what you would do potentially, if you put a bit in before it, wouldn't it? That we, our objective is this, and to achieve that objective, we will do these bullet points. Yeah. So maybe it's just a place of being very upfront, beginning of each box about what the objective is, and these are the actions that we are going to take in here.
Yeah.
To achieve it.
Yeah.
One of the things I will say with the with the public consultation as well is we do find it almost a bit of a difficult balance, because in terms of consultation, obviously in the interest of public consultation, governing principles, we don't want to take finalized objectives, say, what do you think of these? We still want to take them out while they're all in a formative stage.
Yeah.
But the same, that we try and give a few warm feelings, you know, these are the types of things we're going to do. So we have until the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-six to actually refine next year's annual improvement objective. So I think I completely take that on board. In terms of what we put in the annual improvement plan phase two, we can we can certainly put a bit more around the so what and imply what we're going to do. Definitely, definitely can be.
And and by that stage, we would need to be able to have some smart measurable targets, wouldn't we? So for an objective, it'd be a smart measurable target of the number of the number of these things, or, you know, we're not going to have business fire safety people wondering around with paper. You know, we're actually going to have a system that allows our business safety fire people to be on site, being able to directly input the data and what they're seeing, not relying on handwritten notes that may get lost or wet or ruined on the way back from the visit to the station. Those are some of the things, isn't it? Sorry, I've got, I've said.
Hmm. No, I mean, you know, as ever, spot on. All of that pitch.
I'd agree with you about. Always tease up a good meeting. Um. This is fully group of smarting. That's the standard test of objective, isn't it? But it's smart. Um. I think also, I fully agree with Kirsty's point. If I was going forward in time to twenty twenty-seven, what would I want to have seen when I'm looking back? I mean, there's no mention of CRMP, which is going to be an underpinning mechanism of how we assess risks, analyse it, mitigate it, develop policies and procedures, holding back. But that's the problem, it's about prevention. And then I don't know whether we want to talk about fire cover review, because I don't get how we do things. And also in protection, very much like we've got HR, HMIC, looking down about the space inspection programme. That's another overarching way about how we deliver the protection part of the business and how we would look to identify those areas which are greatest at risk. Um, put a a inspection regime around it and all the bits and pieces that go with it in order to show that's the mechanism by how we're going to reduce risk. So CRMP wasn't in there, the space inspection programme wasn't in there as the tools that we would use to navigate our way through. So I think there's, I'm taking on pause. It's a little bit, this is like a task list.
I think I think the bigger issue here in terms of the table itself, calling them proposed objectives is probably the mistake I've made there. Also, in the actual plan, what it will look like is you'll have here is the theme, and we'll just talk generally in it. Like I said before, we wouldn't want it in the plan, say, narrow the objectives down too early, because I think you take that to consultation, it becomes a do you like them, don't you like them? They need just a consultation. We still want to give people an opportunity to draw, craft them a little bit more.
So taking some process to protection.
Yeah.
We would say that we would have carried out a review using this base inspection to carry out review of all the buildings within South Moes area, identified those which are high risk, kind of visited them all within first year. Your target, and then that's progression.
Of course.
Then it means something, doesn't it? We set ourselves a target, we've identified all the high risk, and then we would look to do uh rest in subsequent years, things like that. Community CRMP, there'll be loads of things that we could put out under CRMP about how we reduce risk in the community by a number of measures.
Of course, yeah. I I like that. I take I take all of this on board, like I said. And I know by the end of March twenty twenty-six, I'm hoping we'll be sitting around this table with definitive things, but you know, through next year, and I will know we've we've succeeded. So I said, thinking of the consultation, my complete take on board, we probably need to give the public a little bit more aspiration in terms of the end product, and then maybe put that in. So I think calling the proposed objectives is probably my mistake. I probably fully given that, an idea of work.
No mistake.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Not a mistake. Uh. But I'm very happy to sit with you, Wayne, outside of the meeting, to have a look and learn at the next draft, as you think, because this is going to be worked over, so I'm happy to.
Yeah, do that.
Just, I mean, just pouring on the threats, and if you take response, we do have effectiveness, response to incidents. Okay, so we've done it. This is personally saying so. Now we wanted to be linked in, you procure with new equipment, training, all sorts of things.
Yeah, no, that's it.
Recruitment.
Yeah.
I I think of the support, you will need input from the various departments, won't you? So it's all those Wayne's name on this report. I'm very conscious that it's not just him, but there's a wider service, so you will need to work with Wayne to refine that document. Quick, I'm I'm happy to have a look at it in good time, this is why.
Of course.
Yeah, so I'd like to add to that a little bit. So obviously, when the papers came out, and some of that has been picked up and worked on, and these are from, as Wayne says, the consultation piece. Um. So Stuart, the works in South Moes, has been working, taking into account some of the effects of the stuff that um Commissioner Mandar is just spoken about there in terms of the CRMP and the HMI and the space selection pieces, so that that journey's reflected through in the improvement piece. So some of that work is is going on behind the scenes following the um, so I'd just like to highlight that we have had a look at that, that some of those areas being discussed.
So where are we at then, monitoring officer, in terms of if this is a report for decision? So I think um it sounds like we need to do more work. I think um I think you can still delegate the decisions of public consultation. We won't be meeting again before the thirty-first of October. So if we can have your delegation, but I will take an action that Kirsty, I think you volunteered, um that we can have a feedback meeting with commissioners and refine the language in in that.
Okay, yeah, to do that. Yes, that's a good solution. So so we can approve the video for consultation with all the other bits. Yes.
Carry on. Okay. All right. That's approved. And thank you. Okay, um eight point three, executive leadership, understandable scenes, I'd speak, please.
Thank you, Chair. So um this report identifies the significant change that's happened at exact level since the appointment of the commissioners in February twenty twenty-four. As the CFO has already mentioned, um we are now stabilising the exec team with the appointment of the permanent deputy chief fire officer and two assistant fire officers following the retirement of our current assistant chiefs. Um. The report sets out a blueprint for the future ERT structure. And they also ask commissioner to consider changing the part-time treasurer role into a full-time director of finance role. This follows the rising of the treasurer and the subsequent discussion discussions that we've had in terms of the magnitude of that role and the requirements for it. The report includes a draft description, which is um for your sign off and approval. And finally, the report um shares some thinking around the target operating model for the corporate activity that's based mainly in headquarters and just flags that we'd like to do a piece of work there, that's a more broader piece of work. But we'll bring that to commissioners separately. In terms of the approach that um has been taken uh with regard to developing the structure, appendix one sets out um sort of the foundations of developing a target operating model. And where you start here is you look at your vision and strategy, and then you align your activity to your strategy. So what the what appendix one tries to do is it brings out our priorities, which are set out in our organisational strategy. It sets out our design principles. So how are we going to achieve our um future target operating model? And then it sets out the the architecture. So what are the foundations upon which we're making decisions? So things like putting people at the heart, looking at our best value approaches, so more efficient ways of working. In terms of then moving into appendix two, oh, sorry, yeah, appendix two. And this sets out the current executive leadership team structure um and is is very much based around a sort of interim position for the ERT. Um, swiftly into appendix three, I think, which is probably the most important of them. What we will see there is a future blueprint, which is um which has been developed around one, the appointment of the deputy chief fire officer. And um in terms of the portfolio there, what you will see is a broadened um deputy's role. So the role is just not focused on operational delivery, it's focused on achieving change and transformation to the organisation. And then looking at the individual portfolios, um, these are um more sort of less uh and uh have been aligned to the strategy. So you've got the the service support director, your monitoring officer role, and your finance director role. These are um paid service roles. These will report into the chief fire officer and the board of commissioners. And then um you've got people services director, risk management and operations. These align and report into the deputy chief fire officer. Um. What I would say in terms of the portfolios, what we've tried to do here is um reshape the finance director role as discussed. And so it now focuses on that leadership role in terms of the the financial um strategy. And uh in terms of the uh operations role, it picks up the best practice identified by NFCC around putting prevention and protection into that portfolio. So those are the sort of distinct elements that I would fly with you and today. And so the report is going to be your sign off of the blueprint going forward. And probably move on a treasurer to a director of finance role. And um, you know, if we can have your approval, we can get moving in terms of putting the advert out for the director of finance role.
Um. Thanks for that summary, um Alison. And I I might, before I open up, I'd just like to put on record my thanks to Sarah for the incredible amount of work she's done while being here and and her ability to absolutely take apart the financial structures of this organisation and to very helpfully point us towards what is needed, because when we went out to advert for the the part-time treasurer post, um we didn't know what we didn't know, but Sarah's. um, we didn't know what we didn't know, but Sarah's expertise has absolutely clearly focused us on the future of what is a large organisation like this needs in terms of a director of finance or chief financial officer or whatever we call it. Um, Sarah, I'm very sorry that you're leaving us, I realise that you have other, um, um, other parts of your work and that, you know, this role is not what you thought it was. But you've done an incredible amount of work in a short time and the, uh, the services very grateful to you. So thank you very much, Marianne. Bidge.
Good, thank you. Um, thanks to the paper, I think we've done the chance to kick the tyres on this over the last god knows how long. So it's, lots of going to go around kicking the tyres again, maybe just back the pressure on a few of the tyres. And I think the DDA team's role, which I think is a hugely important thing. I'm just wondering whether that, we've got new people coming in, whether that's about who wants that role most? If there's a skill set option, because this is particularly thing about IT, I would certainly say, I, I, I don't know hardly anything about IT. And if you have that band in your portfolio, it would be, so it's just, if you're happy that that person wants it, that's the best bit, then fine. I think there should be some sort of review period built into this to make sure that this is where we want to be at some point going forward. Um, one thing that strikes me is the waiting in this, the, um, the operations have done this job. And this is a, this is a big, big role. If you just look at it in terms of headcount, ten, twenty times a lot of other people, so that's going to, you know, just a well, some fire control, I just wonder, I know we like, people like to have fire control in odds, but fire control is important. Most of the conversations about fire control are going to be about the tech, are going to be about the systems, are going to be about people in there. There'll be a response about mobilising vehicles, but that's quite a weighted thing to have in that, in that role. I just, just maybe that we pulled up in the review, but that is a, that's a very heavy weighted piece of, very heavy weighted department.
Okay. Your comments are well made, you've signed it with Kirsty.
And now just to thank the, uh, thanks Sarah and to thank, uh, the time and effort and the thought process that has gone into uh, getting to appendix three. I know that, you know, this has been the result of a lot of, you know, discussion, debate. And I think for me, obviously it's really important to have a clear lines of responsibility. So people know what their job is, know what they're going to be held accountable at for. But I think what's also really important is that there is a senior leadership team that has yes responsibility for their own portfolio area, but actually contributes towards the strategic direction of the organisation as a whole. And so I take your point, Bidge, about the, about the numbers at the bottom. But in the end, this leadership team has to have, you know, not only an opinion on the bit that they might directly responsible for, but they also need to speak up and have an opinion about the overall direction of the service. So I think, um, I just don't, that's another point that I want to make. This isn't just being responsible for you, but it is about that collective responsibility across the head of the top of the organisation to provide that strategic leadership. But I'm very happy to support the proposals, uh, in the paper.
Cabinet collective responsibility. We're all one team, you know that, don't we? Indeed. Chief.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'd just like to draw attention to paragraph one point five, last sentence, a longer term plan is to reduce the number of principal officers proposed in the future. And this will be achieved through natural ways, so that's really important sentence in this, in this document. Um, and you'll note in the, in the previous, um, document that we, that we were examining. There are comments in there from people around, from around the organisation who have concerns about the amount of money that's being spent. We are in a, in a period of transformation here and that's exactly why we've had to go up to stabilise the, uh, ELT, the S L T, uh, and to really get stuff going and supercharge the, the transformation program. In time, the intent is to go back down all the numbers.
I, I think those, I think those comments that you've just highlighted, Chief, are absolutely right. But I would say that in terms of event, you know, for the Welsh government to bring us in in order to manage the service, um, the Welsh government to take such focus on, on things and the things there, for the change throughout that process, um, determines that it was leading and those gaps needed to be filled. Now, what happens in the future as we disappear, as, you know, the, the, the new governance model takes place and so on and so forth, who knows? But, um, I think we're absolutely justified in taking these disciplines now, because it's what's needed, as I said. And, um, with, with the assurance that things will, Bidge mentioned about reviewing the process, you've mentioned about things will change, you know, to give the public that absolute guarantee that this isn't standing still. But this is what we need now.
Absolutely. And, and I think also, um, you know, you, you do see comments there and I, I get them when I'm out on station, for example, and, uh, meeting and meeting all the teams, um, in groups in the headquarters. Um, why aren't you spending more money lower down in the organisation? Well, I, I counter that quite cogently with things like the PH programme that we're doing, where we're paying some overtime to make things better for people, so they can get leave, that's an example. Very interesting things that we're doing in that realm.
Yes, yes. Um, is there anything further now? Okay, um, in that case, we, uh, we approve this? Yeah? So we can, so Alison can get on that blow this afternoon and get sorted. Thank you, John. Okay, so, um, on the whole new strategy, Matt, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Chair. Uh, again, so this strategy has been set out for us, set direction for our own call, uh, contained on call system. And I think for us as a services, we're understanding that we are different as a retained duty system compared to other areas of the UK in how we fund it and how we fund our own call, which gives us different challenges to what is faced around other areas of the UK. The strategy is an excellent piece of work that's been done by group manager Sullivan Jones and her team around, and it's built upon a lot of feedback from our staff around how our staff feel and the challenges they have as well. And that is directly linked then to the eight priorities you see at the back around where the intention is to take that direction. It offers us a benchmark for us to continue to obviously show that continuous improvement and that growth of the on-call service. And I think the key thing is exactly like what the commissioner said, your honour, under so what? The so what for us is around developing an on-call system that is agile, but also sustainable for the next five, ten years and going in for the future. It's not just looked at South Wales as well, so a lot of work done by the team that's looking outward around best practice across the UK and some learning across there. And I know group manager Sullivan Jones is a ten and the team are going to a number of services. Certainly they've scored highly as well with the recent H M I C F R S visits and to look at the practices that have been undertaken there. Now, if I could have invited group manager Sullivan Jones just to touch on some of the key areas within there and invite you then for any questions as part of that then.
Uh, would you like to come?
Yeah. Take my piece, yeah.
Take. First, this is fair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, as, uh, um, Jones has just said there, um, as a team, we have been working, uh, across the United Kingdom as part of the NFCC group, but, uh, wider as well, um, going and visiting different services. Um, so we've recently been engaging with Essex, who have a model very much like us with four young core stations. Um, and we, uh, week after next do pretend Lancashire and Cumbria. Um, Lancashire, who are leading the way in terms of, uh, technology and advancements. Um, and we are going to Lancashire to look at the system they use, uh, called the O system, which looks at availability and retention software, which the service had purchased. Uh, we're also then going to look at models that Cumbria currently use in terms of how they crew their appliances, alternative modelling and how we reflect response, et cetera, with their staff. We then intend to, uh, visit, uh, Kent, who have set up a two-year project, um, specifically based on their own call and have placed this, uh, substantial funding into that to increase their own call availability. So we've pulled a lot of documents and policies from them to look at start implementing that. And we're also looking at models that East Sussex are utilising in terms of streamlining our recruitment process. Uh, off the back of that, um, as society changes, uh, policy changes, um, this week we've started a big push with local businesses. Um, and we attended a business partnership meeting with Rondican and Taft on Wednesday. We attended one with Caffilly Council yesterday, which was nine hundred businesses, as we presented to them. And we are going to proceed around the other authorities. So the ask for me really is, um, the recent conference we went to, um, the common theme is, uh, vanded around is the on-call system is broken. I honestly don't think that is the case. I think we need to give the on-call system a little bit of love and look at modernising this system of how we go through it. Hence the, the eight themes that I've placed in that report. Um, and what I wish to do here is taking off the views of our on-call staff. I really want to start pushing forward, be bold and move forward with, with developing a strategy for the next five years, um, which can really set the stall out, um, across the other UK fire rescue services. This is the only on-call strategy currently, um, for the on-call, um, within the UK. So that is something that, um, I think we can really, really push forward and put ourselves at the forefront. So the ask from, from myself and the team is for, uh, the commissioners to, to approve the report and to support the strategic direction that we wish to proceed in over the next five years.
Thank you. Just, just a first comment from me, I'm very, um, pleased to see the amount of information in this and particularly the engagement you had with people working on, on call and, and, you know, their very honest responses. Because when you see those barriers, we can understand why we're having, you know, the difficulty in, in improvement. So that, that's, that's very good, thank you. Bidge.
Uh, yeah, first of all, thank you for putting all this together and coming representing. And also I think it's really good to see that you're, um, engaging with the rest of the UK because it's, uh, it's an issue that is prevalent in the majority of the days. And I'm full power to your elbow by going out and seeing what they're brought and bringing it back in. I just wonder, um, about, when coming about having systems broken or just needs more love. I think people have been trying to resolve the on-call system for generations more and longer. And we've not got anywhere particularly fast. Be interesting to see how this work develops in there to sort some of that stuff out. And I just wonder on that line, whether, um, it's good to bring in best practice into the national council, but is there anything that, do you think is slightly risk averse in terms of how we approach this? Is there something radical that we could maybe think about that? Because if we try to do, was it, I talked about just doing the same old thing in the same old way and just, you know, it's not going to fix it. So have we thought about stuff that no one else is doing, but we've always sort of, it's in your back pocket. We thought, actually, I wouldn't mind putting this on the table, but it might be a bit risky.
I think I had a conversation with yourself and the word you used to me was bold. Um, and ultimately that's something I really want to take forward and I have a lot of ideas that I've discussed with the manager that other services perhaps haven't tried. And I think we need to, to go and try those. And I think unless we try them, and I, and I'm of the opinion, we could try ten different solutions here and perhaps only one of them will work, but if we don't try those, then, then we really don't know. Um, so really for me, I think it's, it is putting everything on the table and trying everything.
I think the thing like innovation and risk taking, so many things which are innovative fail. They not, you know, the, well, the, the challenges with new projects are, they don't always get through. And the organisations', um, risk reduction processes mitigate them out of an option. And actually when, actually unless you try these things, you don't learn from them and you find out what goes next. And also there's a thing about doing things in parallel rather than sequence. We'll try this and if it doesn't work, we'll try the next one. Actually, you could try, you could pilot three or four things at different locations because we're geographically diverse enough to be able to do something that happens, say, on the somewhere else. So, yeah, I mean, I'm interested to see how this, this works. I think it's, it's some, if you can sort this out and you could, um, yeah, and you, uh, what's the word when you, uh, uh, put something in? I mean, you, you just covered the original thoughts when we mentioned. Pay attention, yeah.
Um, yes, thank you very much, Chair. Um, I, I, I'd like to thank Laura and the team for, uh, the work that's gone on here because this is a, a, a load of work that's actually been carried out at great pace. Um, the, the on-call system is something I, I personally want to make sure we square away. Um, i- 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 in addition to the work that's going on here, I was over in, uh, um, uh, I'm, I'm at the Sec Centre of Equity and Public Service, which is a new organisation, it's just been set up at Anglia Ruskin University on Monday. Um, and they have a, they, they think that they have a whole new approach to dealing with getting equity into public services. And they're particularly interested in doing a study on, um, uh, the on-call system in, in the fire services. Danny Cotton was there speaking actually, but they haven't, they, they haven't got anybody who, uh, who was interested in doing this. Um, I am interested in doing that with them and it looks like quite cutting, cutting edge, um, social science research there, which will back up all of the work that the service is doing with, with some academic rigor as well. Um, also, there, there's some experimentation that we need to do here, I think. Um, Lancashire have done some really, really good stuff and that is, that is bringing people into, uh, uh, fire stations and Laura's already talking about going off to the university and.
So, uh, I engaged with the university on Wednesday, um, around international students.
Cardiff.
Cardiff University.
Cardiff.
Um, around international students, um, who obviously can work with their visas for sixteen hours per week. Now, a trial was run in a Peacock store, um, where they had a hundred international students who would provide two days' work at a Peacock store. And that is something I'm really keen to explore is how we can utilise these individuals um, on our on-call stations, because that will provide us with meaningful daytime cover for those individuals. So that's a number of avenues I'm looking at exploring.
Do, do you think that we have in Bill Barrett's, like five minute thing? Because during the daytime, the people are working in there but not living there. We're, we're saying, actually, you've got to.
This is something that myself and my manager have spoken about, is expanding our recruitment into the city locations. So we've got individuals in our city locations who perhaps live in our cities, but work near to our valley areas. And that's something that we're really pushing with the businesses over the last two days, has been to allow those individuals. And one of the barriers I certainly see here is the contracts we have.
That's down to us though, isn't it?
And that is down to us and that is something I want to overall and get that so we're more flexible in how we can recruit people.
I think the ask is, is great for that people, we also think about the ask for ourselves. We're talking about trying to put a pump on here and our own contracts mitigate us putting a pump on here. And so sometimes I think we make life on this hard for ourselves.
Well, then we can make it unhard, we can change things. Kirsty.
Thank you, thanks, Martin. It, it's really great to have this paper because it's the first time, uh, since I've been here that I've seen comprehensive analysis of what we've, of what we've got, so that's really helpful. And the end of the statement says that the on-call is the, says it is the cornerstone of our operational model. But I don't think we should kid ourselves about how stark this is, because if you look at page eleven, you know, there is this serious deterioration in performance in there. So if you look at the number of stations that were ninety percent of all bad, just five years ago, as opposed to the number now that are available, we have not got any in that green capital placement. So that, you know, this short, in a relatively short period of time, our ability to deliver what we ourselves described as a cornerstone is significantly diminished. So it's really great to see, you know, a head-on attempt to try and address that and I really welcome it. And the one thing that I wanted to ask, we know that our on-call is often a gateway into full-time work. And, and the E D I staffs, you know, are really worrying, aren't we? If we know that's where our future staff have, you know, a lot of our future staff are going to come from, our ambition for having a more diverse workforce in terms of operational workforce, we're not going to achieve it. So I'm just wondering what, um, as part of the strategy, will there be a concerted effort to look at broadening the, uh, the diversity of those that we are trying to attract to on-call? Because we know that that potentially will help us diversify our workforce, our, our.
I think that's certainly something that will, you, we, we will see as we expand into those city locations. Uh, and having looked at the recruitment profile, a number of. Uh, and having looked at the recruitment profile a number of years ago, full-time, we know. Those areas offer a much more diverse range of individuals. And I think by expanding into those areas and saying, you don't have to live within the fire, this is our fire station, but if you work within the fire station. Come along. I think that that's when we are seeing increasing those figures. I'm hopeful of that. Great, thank you.
Anything further? Matt, do you need to sum up or?
No, this is, it's, uh, yeah, well, it's a great job and the team, I think it's just the effort where I said, we just want. It gives us a road map now to start to deliver a sustainable agile system that meets the needs of our communities.
Thank you. So thank you to Lauren and to the team for taking such a special piece of work and let us that this. You know, signals the beginning of changes.
Sorry, I shouldn't say that. I guess the question would be, Matt, and to Lauren and to Amanda, is how do we keep track of it now? How is this, yeah, how does, how does this appear? Doesn't it disappear? Yeah. So I guess that's your suggestion that you.
Yeah, I think Laura's got a plan for that as well, that quarterly report that comes into yourself and show that.
Great. Okay, so we approved the on-call duty system strategy?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, reports for information nine point one, um, Manchester Inspector, His Majesty's Inspector. I'm starting to read the fire rescue service update. What came from three, Dominic, please?
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I'd like to start by thanking both the manager and the treasurer for all the work that they've done to support this. And the negotiation of the contract with HMIC FRS. This report is an update for the Board of Commissioners following their approval of inspection by His Majesty's Inspector. That were fire rescue service the ninth of August twenty twenty four. It outlines the proposal for HMIC FRS's revisit and next steps. We recommend commissioners note revisit, read with HMIC FRS at a likely timeline. Commissioners note, direct indirect costs associated with the inspection are underspent. The costs that HMIC FRS could revisit would be less with the previously approved costs. We previously, um, approved an inspectional and assessment process from HMIC FRS. That report was published on the twenty second of May twenty twenty five. The report included three causes of concern, two in understanding of risk and one in protection. Also identified twelve recommendations as part of the inspection. Subsequently identified a number of areas of improvement which also form part of the service's improvement. Usual process for HMIC FRS may include the service going into enhanced monitoring, which they consider a dangerous process. Which would mean HMIC FRS would continue to assess and support. A fire rescue service to ensure that they are reducing risk and making progress as causes of concern. They would also follow that up with a two-year routine inspection. We are not, uh, subject to those, uh, inspection or assessment processes. And therefore we've engaged directly with HMIC FRS to agree, oppose the assessment that supports. Uh, both the public and ourselves to improve juice for us. That proposed assessment will start imminently. We have arranged meetings with HMIC FRS, uh, the commissioners and the chief fire officer. As the early engagement and the service look to start engagement with HMIC FRS as soon as possible. That will take the, uh, form of a number of different engagement processes. They will reengage with the service, they will attend our service improvement boards and our assurance meetings. And then we will lead some of the causes of concern to understand where we're making progress. They will feed back to us in a series of briefings that will identify where we are making progress and where we're not helping us to move forward. This will culminate in a reassessment letter sent to those issues to services in England. And looking towards May and April next year. As part of that, we negotiate the costs with HMIC FRS. Those costs are highlighted within the annex, uh, the assessment figures. All that fall within what we previously agreed on the ninth of August within that paper. The total costs for the revisit and support of seventy one thousand two hundred and thirty-two. Have settled its assistance and a tender contingency charge, bringing the total to eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. Welsh Government have agreed to reimburse us twenty-five thousand pounds of that. And therefore the costs come in under what we previously agreed and approved on the month of August. So we're asking that commissioners notes the reinspection programme, the work that we're going to do during that period of time. Associate costs later.
And this is all about helping us to get better. Yeah, I'm very pleased that we've come in under in terms of costs. Um, and I'd like to. Hold our thanks to the Welsh Government for the support they've given us previously and with this further assessment. Um, and, uh, I ask for any other comments on this, please? No, in that case, it's noted in the earlier letter. Um, okay, nine point two, half the only update following thematic review progress. Matt, please.
Your chair and commissioners, I will, I agree with this game and taking questions you have then regarding the update. So as, obviously the update is on the thematic review for broadening the role. I would made some significant progress with this. So I think the key is to focus on now. Is that our recommendations of one, three and four, we're delivering them on track. And we are starting to move into phase two now of what is our reset as well as part of that. We, we, we will include in, um, the data and the metrics in our updates to you. In the normal meetings regarding the, the feedback and the data that is coming out of our reset. Showing that increase in productivity that we're able to report. And I think the key thing with it as well, that, that the, the dialogue with the social partnerships remain open. And is a standard agenda, agenda item on our social partnership meetings around feedback. Of coming from our reset, which I'm pleased to say there is no real significant feedback coming back now on this. And it's almost transitioning into that point where it becomes business as normal for us. We're moving to phase two now, which is on that clear definition of the roles of crew managers, watch managers, station managers. And that will be supported by elements of, um, the training and obviously the leadership academy. Which will support those in their roles and delivering clear expectations at station level. As well as then building in a robust training, uh, exercise programme, which we will be setting out in the coming weeks. Around set exercises, which our crews will be responding to around themes and risks such as property fires, RTCs, et cetera. And that'll be run at three, uh, three pump incidents, which will be predominantly no note dis exercises to our operation. Our crews, which again will be recorded as part of our reset.
I, I really like that title. You said, we listened, we changed. So a really good sample, really summed it up, doesn't it?
It did. And it was really effective, gained simply news that were, that was obviously. The areas that people were concerned about, there was, there was really some really good suggestions and we were able to evidence that sent the crews. And again, now we pick it up a lot on the principle, lots of visits, discussion with watches. And the key bit was that continued dialogue with the FPU. So we actually have a teams channel set up. That allows that continual dialogue that comes from the FPU to come through then.
Excellent. Thank you. Kirsty?
Thank you very much. I think what will be really important is actually seeing the data.
Yes.
Because if we're being, if I'm being brutal, then this paper does not actually. Demonstrate the difference that the programme is making in terms of efficiency. Now, I take you at your word that it's making a difference. But I think it's really important for public scrutiny that we actually see some of the data that is behind it in terms of. How the introduction of this is actually making sure that we're using our resources efficiently as possible. And then secondly, I just wonder how we, how are you auditing compliance? So how do we know that what is being reported in is actually what is happening? Now, I've got no reason to think that it's not, but, you know, you telling me is reassurance. What I'm looking for is assurance. And so I can only do that if I've got more than one source of this. Matt tells you, we're fine. So I think it would be really great at some stage to have some hard and vast data that demonstrates. You know, the impact and then how this helps us. Uh, with our stakeholders, show that we are, are running an efficient system. Because, you know, ultimately that was. What some of the motivation around the world was, wasn't it, to this agency? So we need to demonstrate that. In not doing one of the recommendations, we are able to achieve outcomes regardless of that.
Yeah, there is a, there is a plan for that, Commissioner. It's not, it's not gonna, it won't come, it won't come probably in the next couple of weeks, but we'll see. But a piece of work we actually make is doing an operation assurance and tying this into our station audits for twenty-six. Going forward as well, but that should capture that, that draw for you, that reassurance.
You know. Assurance.
Assurance.
You're offering me reassurance today. I'm looking for assurance.
And as, as we're talking about this, you know, I'm thinking ahead, next Friday, we have a coordinating with the unions. We have a quarterly meeting with the local authority leaders. You know, we could just have a couple of bullet points summary of what you've been doing, Matt.
Yep.
That offers them reassurance from us. And then we can come through with the figures for assurance. Because the more we tell them about what has been achieved, the happier everyone is. Bidge?
Yeah, um, good then, kind of saying, I think using the RAG system is really good. And it naturally draws you towards red, to see where the red is. And in this report, I know I'm going ahead, but in this report and the ones subsequently. When you come to the number of priority or the three, which have got a status, but doesn't say what they are. Or is it that there are, there aren't ten, eleven and twelve?
Yes.
Eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, that's just.
And then also, just for the, you know, comment from the minute. Will be on, um, page two one one. To the operation trainers, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
You can't take them out of the form.
You can't take, probably.
You can't remove them. There's nothing against them. They're like, they're the lockdown man. They didn't write the lockdown.
It's presented, it looks like.
Yeah.
There's, there's no headings on against them.
There's no headings.
But the form is, uh, the editing is locked. Try to remove.
Got the key.
I think, sure. I think, I think we gave this feedback after the pre-meet, actually, at the time. Yes, we did, mate. So maybe we can take that offline as we can.
Yeah, just on the specific about, we talked about, um, you know, it's, it's, I think it's fantastic. Um, doing the assessments, which I think is really, really important. We should then get, you get demonstrating competence. It's a fuss to rank if we've been lacking because we've only had. Reviews called by either incident commanders or fire press. This will give us a much richer basis for evidence. What's your, um, is it an annual timeframe that you're going to review this on or even six months to see whether it's practically possible?
The, the actual operation assurance average, which we did, they know we've done that six monthly. We've done it three monthly assurance, first of all, to see if it's actually captured or we expected to capture.
Right.
And then that'd be done six months later.
So I guess from the operational assurance, we will then have an understanding whether our processes and systems work. Whether our equipment is up to scratch and whether our people are able to do the jobs we expect to do. Which would then change possibly procurement aspects and then the training requirements within the organisation. Because we're assuming that everything works despite, I mean, that result. I should think that proper assessment will identify certain areas which we could do better on, or areas we're doing really, really well. But I can run to talk.
Can I sit up to the table?
Sorry.
While I'm sitting down as well, Commissioner, what we will be looking at as well is a very similar, what, similar system, but working with. Element wire then around the elements of prevention and protection. We should see an increase. In that as well, based on that targeted time exactly what, so what, what difference you're making as well.
Okay.
Uh, rather than jumping ahead, um, part of the operational excellence report that we're looking at around their effectiveness. There is two folds. So the first fold was creating the changes, it's specifically around firefighting. The second area is around operational assurance. What I will do is I'll address what the plan is going forward and I will give both incident response and station-based response. Utilising the team and stuff that we've got. And then that will feed back in with, with the work that Matt's doing. We're putting a lot of stuff out there and the, the question we're looking at is, so what? Is it, is it working? Are we having an effective change? And how do we get tangible results from what we're, we're trying to do?
You can tell you've got the systems, i.e. the IT in place, the people, this is, this is all, you've got what you need to do to.
We're, again, it's just about being bold. We're looking at changing what we currently do and trialling. The new team that's going out today. And if I hand on have this, we're going to be blindfired by things that we weren't thought, that we hadn't previously thought about. But that's why we're trying to get, take those steps to have, our ultimate goal is to make our frontline crews. Better at what they do, more effective at what they do. So by doing that, it's having a look at what we do and then providing that positive feedback, then looking for where the changes are coming from. Um, and I, just rather than going into in-depth detail, I'll give you, uh, what we're looking at is short-term, medium-term and long-term. Reviews on our performance, things that we can change that are just station-based specific. Things that are affecting a certain area of, of, or a, a group. And then something where we're looking at policy and equipment over a long thing, but it's, it's making sure that we've got a meaningful way of applying actions to individuals. Where we needed each type of response. So this needs to change to the needs of things like that. And the need to provide us the feedback on how and why you've done it. And that's, that's the ultimate goal with the ops assurance team.
And everything, of course, needs to circle back, sorry, to money and cost. And how much these things are going to cost and the implications. And everybody needs to have an awareness of money, finance. Costs far more than has happened previously. Yes?
Yes.
Chief?
If I may, Chair. Um, so from my perspective, uh, uh, Matt and I have been talking about, um, no notice exercising. Um, but also big scale exercising as well, strategic level response. If you look at Grenfell, you look at Manchester, you look at Lacan House. All of those were, uh, you, you saw the organisation getting overwhelmed with decision-making. Um, and that's something we need to do. So the, the mantra is exercise, exercise, exercise until everything in the organisation works correctly. And that includes the headquarters responding and the organisation being able to, to, to make sure it's making active decisions. One of the biggest problems that if, when, when you look at all of those is look at control. And we've had recently, we've got, had control levels dip. Um, so that control room decision. Um, that is something that we need to, uh, to accelerate and I'm doing that.
I think it's really good that you're doing these exercises, the, the exercises at scale. I've been able to gather, I've done the scale and looking at, possibly to be able to have a little meeting for.
Yep.
So good.
Anything further?
Yep, me thinking.
Okay, in that case, thank you very much, Matt. And, and moving on. Ties nicely into nine by three, the Grenville update.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'd get on the highlights, uh, reports for information and that day on current progress. This progress gains both phase one and phase two, the Grenfell inquiry, but also fire rescue service. Learning from Wales, uh, ready to go again. So I think the key part again, it comes back to the dedicated high rise team. Established in March twenty twenty five, which has enabled us to make significant progress against. One recommendations. So key progress. Again, I'll just summarise them, training, new high-rise packages completed. And now we're moving on to continual professional development. For all our commanders, which commences in October twenty twenty five. Ops intelligence, site-specific risk information is now up to date and accessible. Quarterly, quarterly familiarisation visits at thirteen P stations. We have plans being drawn up by the clan team, uh, which are providing the information that our crews need. Firefighters and lifts are being visited, uh, and tested during BFS visits. Communication, we've improved. There's now a dedicated eight Ops eighteen channel. So we're now able to reach out from the fire grounds, from control to the fire grounds. Uh, whilst we explore some new digital, uh, tools such as apps. Uh, emergency calls, new life, uh, survival guidance procedures in place. And our staff are trained and exercised jointly with Middle West Wales Fire Rescue Service. And we've implemented a range of new equipment, including a smoke hood, smoke blockers and smooth ball branches. Currently being rolled out. So a lot of innovation with, within the team. Recommendation status, you can see all the green status, which includes our decision-making tactical flow rates. Training, intelligence plans, our lifts, communications. training, intelligence plans, our lifts, communications, emergency calls and equipment. The points to note are the amber, so again, amber in the site specific risk information. But the policies under, under review, new initial attendance block pa, plans being developed to replace, uh, our operational tactical plans. All we're trying to do is make it simple for the crews, so when they arrive, they're not overloaded with information, they have the key information at the right time to enable them to put into place some of their actual plans. And ops assurance, again, which probably ties in with what, uh, Group Manager Evans will talk about. Uh, and that, that plan is currently in progress, so I won't take that away because that's probably going to be spoken about. And the one key, uh, recommendation which is currently read, and this is under the learning, uh, in Wales Grenfell for the five recommendations, is the National Operational Guidance Transition Team. That's what all three services come together to look at the national operational guidance. And it's gone out to the three services and at this particular moment in time, based on three different delivery methods, it was just not ideal to try to do things collaboratively. Although we will link in in relation to what we're doing, there's three slightly different ways of working, so it's better that we continue as we are, but we have that avenue that we liaise and agree on what we're doing, they're not too dissimilar. But it's felt just where we are in our journey, it's not the best fit to come together to work on that at this particular moment in time. So overall position, again, we're making excellent progress and you can see the progress which we're making. High rise team does ensure the coordinator sustain the forward looking response. The vast majority of the recommendations are complete or embedded with only two remaining in progress with one not a doubt at the, at a national level. So any questions to last stage?
Yeah, my, my question was obviously going to be about recommendation two and, you know, the red rag status on that. Um, am I right in saying that this service will, would have the more, would have more high rise than the other two services?
Yes. Absolutely, yes.
So.
No.
What's that?
We can't wait for the others.
Oh, we can't, yeah, that's, so, um. Yeah, that, that kind of leads to my next point, which would be then, that we would be sector leading clearly because we've got more of them to deal with and therefore we need to be ahead of the game. Yeah.
Absolutely, uh, and again, I think by having our dedicated high rise team and the work which they have ongoing and linking in with Welsh Government in particular recently, we're satisfied that our position is where we need to be.
Okay.
We are linking in and that's key, we are linking in with our partners, with Middle West and North Wales to ensure that our approach is in line.
Yes.
It's just at this moment in time, we can independently progress the national operational guidance.
Yes.
To what we need it to be.
Okay, that's reassuring. Now we need assurance. Quincy?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to pick up on the S S R I work, my, I was very lucky, we seemed to go out on a visit and stand to actually see what they do when they go out, it was absolutely fascinating. And as everything I have heard in the last year or so, it's far more complicated in real life than it would appear for a piece of thing.
Yeah.
And but, and indeed, I think it was that day they were starting the new on station training. They were on their way to a station to do the first training after that visit. But like alluded to earlier, I was a bit surprised about the almost archaic way in which we're asking our staff to do our work. So it's really complicated, there's loads of information to be gathered and they are literally there with quickboards, bits of paper and a pen. And in terms of it back to efficiency, they write it all down there, then they have to take it back to wherever they're going. Then they have to write it all into a computer and upload it. The, you know, not only is that a huge waste of their time, there's huge opportunities for mistakes to be made because of the transfer of information. There's opportunities for bits of paper to be lost, those environments aren't pristine environments. We, we were up in an attic with, you know, hazards everywhere, you know, something could be misplaced. It's just such an inefficient way of collecting what is really, really important information.
Hmm.
And I just wonder whether there is an opportunity when you're looking at only reviewing the policy and how we disseminate information about whether there is an opportunity to look at doing it and equipping our staff with what they need to do it.
Yeah, I mean, straight away you think voice notes, you know, iPad phone, you know, there's so many.
There's got to be a better way of doing it than that, than that they're doing it. I mean, don't get me wrong, they're doing a great job, I don't want to make anybody think that they're not doing the job well. They're doing the job really well, but it is not the most efficient way. And they'd be the first to say that it drives them crazy.
Yeah.
The agreed project, which does give you reassurance, um, I believe it's had to be pushed until next year due to funding, significant funding involved, which would be the purchase of a five G tablet for each fire appliance, which would allow them to do exactly what you're saying, that will stop that obviously duplication of information. And again, reality is probably you could argue it through a investor save with probably the amount we spend on printing this stuff off, then time efficiency, so that is scheduled for next year, for next financial year.
They not use voice notes now, you know, talk, everyone's got a mobile, you know, talking to their mobile, set it off and then it can be transcribed back, there's got to be a quicker way.
But it's super complicated with the forms.
Yeah, the forms quite, yeah, a detailed form, but the, the tablet will allow that.
What they were asking for, what they felt was the most efficient way is that they could just simply put the information on there and then.
Yeah, yes.
Because they're not, they're doing it more than once at the moment.
Yeah, no, that's not efficient. Pige.
Picking up on that, I guess probably should go back to single data entry.
Yeah.
We have got so many helpful data sets in my service. So when it comes to the forms, I'm guessing there are forms, so we control how long the change we've made it for people.
Yeah.
Um, I think the, I think you have the point, Kirsty's name, we've got a Stephen system coming in, which is going to link all the information about the high rise as well, then sits in the risk based inspection programme, so we've got all these different systems. But we need to be feeding these, it all needs to link together. When it comes to the, the tablets, it'd be great to use those for visits, but they can be used, you want a ruggedized tablet, don't you? So they're used by incident commanders and these are multifunctional tablets that can be used. So, so I guess the thing is, some of this we control and we've made it bureaucratic. On the things we've got to make sure, get the back, back, and I thought, you know, we've got some funds back at the ranch, I've made treasure, but does this need to be pushed into next year? Or is it?
I haven't seen the business case.
Right, it's, it's sat, um, it's sat with the digitalisation project and obviously the I C T elements part of it, but I'll touch base with the treasure and see if that could be pulled forward as well.
We live in an IT world, every person we recruit to this organisation is being brought up on an iPad or.
Yeah.
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 And we come in and say, here's a click on the iPad.
Don't forget the digital ID cards that have been announced today.
I don't think something about that, yeah. Yeah, good question.
Sorry, yeah, Chief.
Yeah, if I, um, we've got the alacrity, alacrity project, which is, which is ongoing, which I believe the whole aim of that is to drag everything together and digitise. Uh, Jake, I don't know if you've got any updates on that.
Yeah, Chair, I mean, that's, uh, that's due in, uh, so we'll be at, uh, sort of level zero to be able to do that. And, um, hopefully we are looking at around the end of November, the feedbacks of the E L T.
Hmm.
The full description of what we need to do to enhance our digital backbone, not just from an operational perspective.
Yeah.
But also from a H R perspective for our process organisation.
From a model dog.
Absolutely, and I, I think if you look at a five year plan, the implementation, financial plan, obviously that'll go through the financial forum to be able to do that because it's going to take a while, it's going to then join activity anyway.
It's, it's another example of us playing catch up with the rest of the public service.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, a really important piece of work though that, because, um, you can very quickly, oh, issue a new iPad and actually you haven't thought, thought through the whole big picture.
Hmm.
And that whole big picture is actually how we're going to, how we're going to be saving.
Yeah, yeah, investors save. I've signed off a lot of those one time, I don't know how much we did save, but they convinced me that that was the right thing to do. Matt, uh, Mike.
Yeah, I'll need to come back, uh, Kirsty, in relation to the commercial fire safety checks and the S S R Is which you, you attended. It's great that you did go on there and what it did give you is an insight into what the crews are doing. But more importantly, you alluded to it there, the business fire safety qualifications, just for noted. We are rolling that out to all our crew managers and watch managers to give them a recognised skills for just disqualification, which then allows them with confidence to go out and, and look at these buildings in detail. And often these buildings are the ones with this risk, risk to the crews and risk to the, the actual public. So our business fire safety officers going out, the audit officers, their focus is on the very high and high risk. But often there's premises within the communities which we don't get out to because they're not deemed high risk and often can be missed, so by giving the crews that information, they're able to identify any of the issues which they wouldn't have previously without that, uh, training and knowledge. But it is going to improve both the, the knowledge and, uh, information that the crews can identify, but also the public.
I'm just, uh, Mike, I'm, I'm just, uh, both amazed and in awe of Kirsty going up into an attic. To look at things, she's certainly taking one for the team again, I don't do that.
Quite happy to root around in an attic. And anyway, it was full of very flammable material, so the point is unless you've gone up in the attic and you've written that down somewhere, nobody knows what is up there and you send the crews in potentially without actually knowing that there is no compartmentation and that a file and smoke. Those in there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm impressed. Uh, if there's nothing further on that, then we'll move on to nine by nine. Uh, certainly the natural progress, operational training, uh, Liam.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so the operational review, systematic review of operational training, the same recommendations are all on track to be completely within the agreed deadline. I'll give a, a summary highlight of the recommendations, Chair. Recommendation one, uh, we've established a subgroup that are implementing the training needs analysis calendar, training calendar for each specific station. This is a collaborative effort alongside the statistics team, operational intelligence for the look forward, stats for the look back, uh, the unit authority group manager and station commanders for that professional judgment element. And we'll analyse five years' worth of call, historic call data to give us, uh, a data driven training needs analysis for each particular station. We've completed regen and available Morgan, the sub team has, and they're currently at Cafferty and Cardiff. These will be reviewed, once complete then, these will be, be reviewed on a biannual basis by a person that you will, in, in training, that will review the calendars. We do anticipate that, uh, as the sub team moves through devising these calendars, they will gather pace and complete in, in the, in the deadline because the more familiar they are with the process, quicker it will become. Recommendation two A and two B, you'll be familiar with the presentation I provide you on the unconstrained analysis. Um, that, that work is now complete and we're using the outcome of that, that unconstrained analysis to, to work, to use for recommendation three and recommendation one, there are several interdependencies there between these two recommendations. Two A and two B are now a hundred percent complete, uh, in terms of presenting them to commissioners for final sign off. We are just developing a repository system on monday dot com that are extensive bits of evidence that back up the work that we've done to get to this particular point. So to enable commissioners to have, uh, an assured view of the, of the, the progress and the evidence, we're just developing a repository so we can refer back to the documents for your, for your viewing.
Yes.
In terms of, uh, recommendation three, that was, as I, as I mentioned, there's a number of interdependencies with recommendation one. Uh, and that, that particular recommendation will be completed alongside recommendation one. It's currently at the point of writing this report, it was at twenty percent complete, but we do, as I said, anticipate that would be completed by the, by the end of this calendar year. Recommendation four, so developing the micro teachers for all of the, the training, uh, topics that are not covered in the national training, uh, manual. Again, that is, uh, progressing at, at pace and we, uh, are currently at seventy five percent completion. Uh, I did want to invite you down this afternoon.
Yeah, I'll do it soon.
We've got some sickness in the team, so I just wanted to give you an overview of the complexities of the task.
It was out and about again, but I can't go unfortunately today.
So, um.
This is, this is.
We will rearrange that for you, just I'd like to give you an overview of how, how the, the teachers are put together. Uh, please to announce that recommendation five and six are complete, so we've reviewed our control measure tactics for recommendation five. Uh, this has been shaped by the delivery team and extensive work from, uh, colleague to my left and the training team, the tactical firefighting training team in, in, in Cardiff Gate and throughout the UK. We've visited lots of addresses in the UK and we've had exchange visits with European colleagues and, uh, food and fields, Holland. Yes, yes, Chair, uh, we also had somebody down from Sweden, uh, on Tuesday. So the Swedish fire nerd came to Cardiff Gate to do a presentational tactical firefighting. Very well received around the service and it was live broadcast as well.
Excellent.
Throughout the service and recorded, and we've got an Australian delegation coming in, uh, a week on the seventh, so week, we Tuesday. Uh, so we, we are getting a, a breadth of knowledge from around the globe really, and you know.
You can't get further away than Australia.
You can't, absolutely not, uh, but we've also got some other services now, they're showing interest to come into Cardiff Gate to have a look at our, our practices. We are, I, I would say we are seeing now at the national level as one of the, as one of the front runners in terms of tactical firefighting.
Can I cut you and go to Ryan and say, Ryan, are we, are we, are we sure, A, that you're listening and B, um, that we are making, I mean, this is really, you know, this is great stuff, it's international exchange, so you know, we want this highlighted, we want it publicised, we want it out there on our social media, we want the photographs, okay? We want all that com stuff because we are doing stuff that other people are not doing, that, and we need to tell the public about it and make sure we send those releases out to all our local authority leaders, to all their comms teams and all the ten councils that fund us and Welsh Government, okay? They need to know on a daily basis, tell them, tell them and tell them again.
Thank you, Chair. So we, we've actually got a, we've got a seat now, the National Fire Chiefs Council Tactical Firefighting Group, I said that has the day's lead. Uh, we've developed a subgroup to, to rewrite the national framework for tactical firefighting, so we will have a voice in that as well. It's a really unique opportunity for us in Wales, which we probably never.
Voices around the table.
Absolutely, yeah. So really, some really positive work there in the National Fire Chiefs Council Operational Training Education Group.
Where's that based? Where, where meetings take place?
So they're all over the UK, Chair, uh, the last one was in, uh, West Yorkshire.
Right.
So, um, yeah, it's chaired by, uh, A C F O, um, Nick. And he's, he's certainly escaped me in a moment, Chair, sorry, uh, but he's the chair along with co-chair with Craig Flannery, the A C F O for Middle West.
All right, okay, excellent.
If I may, Chair, um, there, there, there's a bigger picture here about the, um, about the whole sector.
Yeah.
Um, and I was down at the NFCC on Tuesday and Wednesday, and I've been in quite a few discussions with Phil Garrigan, who's the NFCC Chair. Um, the College of Fire, which is one of the recommendations that comes out of the, the Grenfell report.
Yes.
Highlights that, that the sector hasn't been doing enough work on the, on the academic side of things.
Yeah.
To try and get ahead of things.
Like policing do, yeah.
And, and that largely goes back to the, the time when the, uh, the fire service college, college was privatised. And then the, the researchy side of things in, in the UK started to tail off now. Yeah, I mean.
When was that privatised? Just very interesting.
I was at about twenty thirteen, it was sold to Capital.
Yeah, and that had been, uh, it had been, um, it became an agency, didn't it? But it, it's, it's a major issue, um, uh, in fact, there are a couple of podcasts that, that were worth listening to, that, uh, and the firefighter podcast, I'll look at those. Um, but there, there is a big move now to try to get this College of Fire up and running. Um, the Whitehall, uh, leads the servants, um, this chap called Peter Lee was talking about it. I, I find it fascinating actually because when you actually go into it, yeah, I don't really know what they want. So it's, it's quite ethereal that this conversation, I'm taking the, uh, the NFCC leader, Phil Garrigan and a few other people from the, um, uh, from the NFCC to go and look at the Defence Academy, not to say that's what you want, but to explore a whole range of different things, because the, the, the comment out there is on the College of Common Hounds and has a view of all of these, these kind of things quite the way across the world. There are all sorts of courses they could just access and buy if they, um, so we're taking him over there. Really serious discussion though, because we are actually going out there and probing and getting this information and bringing people in, the only thing that concerns me here is how peer reviewed is that stuff? How peer reviewed is Lars, uh, the fire nerds stuff?
Hmm.
You know, and so we're bringing all this stuff in, uh, we need to be aware that it, it's very easy to listen to one person, then you listen to the next person. How peer reviewed is that and how academically robust is that, I think is a really funny question.
You mentioned Whitehall, in, in the reshuffle now, there's a new fire monster, so, you know, we need to be aware of that as well.
Yeah. I'm, I'm proud for this now, it's interesting actually, um, thank you for letting me know about the Redstone, I mean, anything. But also a lot of the greens, some of the greens are actually, I think a hundred percent, some of them are twenty percent. Twenty percent, it's like a hockey stick, it's gonna.
It, it is, yeah.
And on recommendation, sorry, that's the, um, the training applied, the announcements of training applied for the R P S.
Yes. Yes.
Are you saying that by completing this piece of work, our RPS will all be trained to the standard that we want them and all the aspects we want them to do?
Uh yes, uh so.
Time that's available into.
That's the most important thing, yes. So that the the training needs analysis have been reviewed. Um taking account of the hazards, threats and risks in each particular station area. So by the very nature of an on-call station being retained duty system, the risk is fundamentally lower. So the training will be fundamentally lower. Um so for example, just to use a real easy analogy. Uh the crews, so in a, in a, in a, in a, in an urban connotation, which you'd have. Railway network, chipping, high rise, you're not going to get that in a rural uh con connotation. So the risk is automatically lower, so the training would be lower, so that they don't need to train as often. Need an awareness of planes and 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 then.
Because they've got to be part of the mobilization of the.
So that's why they need an awareness. So they do it perhaps once annually or once biannually, as opposed to our crews in the city centre will do it probably four times a year.
All right, okay, all right.
And and that piece of analysis is really deep and detailed, so.
It is.
Just wondering if we can do it on two hours on call. How much time do we need for that whole time then?
So the whole, the whole time calendars, again, will have, they'll have more, they'll have more training in involved.
When you mentioned that uh when you come to the um tactical firefighting, you're now. Being classed, how do we know that?
I know, but best in class, we know that one, we are seen as one of the sector leaders.
How do we know that? Uh that's reassuring.
Yeah.
How do I, how do I?
I suppose from the Operational Training Education Group, um we are looked to from our peers in the family network across. Because every, every FRS in the UK has has been invited to sit on that group or aid uh a lead from from that group. Uh and just from the conversations around around that table. It's clearly evident that a lot of FRSs from the UK are still far behind us in terms of facility, equipment, operational tactics. Uh but again, I wouldn't say we're a hundred percent there yet and further on that. Some of the key decisions in my report. Um I've instructed the operational development review team to. To carry a themed analysis of incidents now. So some of the stuff that we've done through our operational excellence reporting. Implementation of the quadrant uh model, the BCA uh tactics. So what we've done, what I've done, I was instructed the operation development reviewing to conduct analysis and research and review at. Leaned incidents to make sure that our crews are implementing the BCA, they are implementing the quadrant model.
So is that, is that still the, that's the training center assessment?
At the moment.
But we've got operations assessment.
Not yet. We're still separate in training.
We're morphing into one team now, aren't we?
Thank you.
Again, that's I'll give you an overview.
Yeah, I've been ahead all week, all the way to here, haven't you? And what I, I'm sorry, what I didn't, I shouldn't have been in the others, uh when I said about the um new fire minister, she's also. The Minister for Building Safety, which provides ties in, so it's um. It's Samantha Dixon, and she's formerly the leader of Chester City Council. So anyone that comes from local government in my book really knows, you know, how like this works because they've had to. They've had to sign it off and operate it and I understand it. So Samantha Dixon is uh. Is a really good contact there. Um anything further on this from anyone, please? Okay, thank you very much, Neil. Um so we've now got Mike Evans. Um operational effectiveness, where you're going to answer all things which is brought up for the last five minutes.
You're going to hopefully then someone to. Just Chair, if I can just give you a quick overview, October twenty four, we're twelve months in, we're approaching that twelve month. We've made some good steady progress, especially in the area of sort of. And operational tactics and response side of things. That changed mainly for shift. To get you those answers that how much is this making a difference?
Yes.
If I can jump back to one of your questions, how do we know we sort of sector leaders are always pushing the boat, eight on this. Um when we look into, the report coincided with some changes in national operational guidance. So and it was an NFCC group who arranged, so it was taken into that. When they come and visited South Wales, because we'd already made steps to implement the national operational guidance as part of the effectiveness report. They've seen our progress, then if we given our details for other services to help them implement them. And if some of the things like you have said, we've got different visitors coming into services. Just to say that these were the problems that we faced, how did we implement them and what they've achieved? What we can answer at this moment in time and is how effective this is on the operational grounds. And that's why we're moving into the oppositional one. I think what what would be really helpful is if um I. Set uh set some time aside with the commissioners as the even more. In-depth overview of the operational assurance process. Is that it, the milestones within the report, but I think it's that extra meat on the bone that would it would help answer some of these questions of what we are trying to achieve.
That would be very helpful, Mike, if we could factor that in.
Our uh our manager over there will. Yeah, I love make myself available whenever you are. So I was just to give you an overview.
Thank you.
Because the reports can take you to the senior leadership team.
Yes.
Uh and they've got an understanding of what we're trying to achieve. I think you would be happy if I shared that with yourselves.
Yes.
Um so recommendations two and three are awaiting to sign off. Um you asked a question during our uh. How will we share in this with the chief fire officer, uh chief fire and rescue service advisor while following a previous meeting? We arranged a online meeting with him and explained how we've left the recommendations uh and the evidence that. We we've put together to meet recommendations two and three in the direction that we're going on in four, five and six. So that has been heavy day.
I'd have to react to that.
There was a lot of positive and there was additional advice, I think, trade the process, the the chief fire advisor has been. Very positive on what we're doing and his advice and direction. What's that?
Has he put it in writing?
It was, again, it was through the conversations that we were having, but.
Did you record it?
What's that?
Did you record it?
I know, I sat there with myself.
So obviously advisors concerned.
Again, it's, it's just the direction as well, it's very positive on 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 from from the outside of it.
I just want to make sure that, you know, what he says to to Mike is recorded somewhere because, you know. It's very important that that order trail is is covered and. And that assurance that Mike gets that we know about that insurance assurance as well.
Yep, and that'll be the the next phase, like Neil alluded to, once we're in a division where we've got a a. Uh program where we can demonstrate or and share all the evidence with you, that'll be the the last phase of recommendations two and three. Um there is one, if I could draw your attention to recommendation, uh one of the um. Points, uh I think it was point thirteen on the RAC status that we're currently ready to put in the. Team in place, I can just rest the show now, that's changed to green, the the um. Uh to put the team in place, we was in the process, we've identified those individuals and then we're just working on a time. Put that team together and that's where that team will do station based assurance and operational based assurance. Rather than working in the two silos they are at the moment. Uh once we've got that team in place, free of extra capacity, we will be utilizing the attack officer cadre to carry eight. Uh the operational base assurance and supporting with elements of the station based assurance. Um the team trial is expected to pass uh last six months, we will. Again, ironate those things that we haven't been able to sort of establish when we were putting the plans in place and. Following that, I'll I'll feed back uh to SLT and the commissioners on sort of the way we're moving forward. Uh it was just the opportunity to see if there was any questions on the information who presented to you so far.
I I think it's a separate meeting outside of this meeting with you, the way you go to things in more detail would be very helpful, Mike. Um and at this point, you know, it's very, um it's very. Good to see that so much has moved forward and um, you know, even. One of the ones in the report is read is is agreed, as you just said. So it's about keeping, for us, it's about keeping up to date with what's happening, keeping on track with what's happening and making sure that, you know. All the people like Sammy, this, you know, Welsh Government, the advisor and so on and so forth, actually with our programs as well. Anything further? Okay, okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to uh nine hundred and six then, Dominic, please, help me do.
Yes, so this is the half year update on the cultural review progress. And we are asking the commissioners now progress of the implementation of the recommendations. And agree note the evidence that is required for sign off of recommendations. The commissioners get regular updates on the progress of the recommendations and are indeed um. Involved in in the sign off and QA process. Uh you will see this from these uh updates of the numbers of where we currently are, but as with these recommendations, they move forward. Quite quickly as well, I'll give you the latest uh numbers of where we are with those. So we currently have fifty eight signed off. We have seventeen that have evidence currently submitted, twelve of those are waiting for final QA sign off. Uh we made a commitment to commissioners that we would do that by the end of the month.
Yeah.
Um we have had a look at those twelve and we we are assured that there is evidence against them, so it's just a case of signing these off. We've got three that are waiting uh evidence. And those are primarily around our promotions and temporary promotions. And and we did a whole review of that and analysis team is working. Get that evidence and finalize those key areas. We have nine recommendations that are outstanding and as you will be aware, three of those are annual review recommendations that we're picking. When we've completed this process and five of those are dependent on external factors. We previously briefed those to commissioners on our presentation. And in June, those recommendations will feed into our ongoing transformation and change program. More effort into those key areas. Initially, there were six, but we've subsequently completed the work on EDI assessment facilities. So we're now dealing with that as correct. And just for completers, those are recommendations thirty one, thirty six, sixty five, seventy five. Those are around redrafting our policies and procedures and the training that's involved to embed those into the service. Our effective document management system, uh which will fall into our wider scoping work. Uh the commissioners will get a bit on during the service improvement board. Follow up with you about the L T performance and independent view of our wider structures that open with. The work that we've done around our ERT, the paper that you've had to date. Your commissioners will also know that communication of those is paramount, we make a commitment to uh communicate those. Uh more widely. The update on where they are is within the report, but we've made progress. I'll give a quick update on those key areas. Uh we've done internal communication, those are published on our internet. And we did staff briefings, SLT has been briefing staff on those as well, they've improved them in our regular manager briefing. We've also included a number of them on our external website for the public and they can be found within the who we are section under transformation. Those have been grouped into broad areas and we've also done infographics for staff and for the public so that they can see in a much more visual way the progress we've made in those key areas. Communication and engagement have been communicated both internally and externally, as has ethics values and behaviours. Leadership and connecting people and speaking up. We've recently published internally our DICE facilities management, it's due to go on our external website shortly. We have completed the draft for our training communication and that is due to go out either today or early next week. And we'll be following that with policies and procedures, week commencing the twenty ninth. Uh during our service improvement board, we will be covering the sign off of the promotion temporary promotion process as agreed in our previous actions. And that's on October second. We will then communicate our recruitment and promotion on the sixth. We'll provide the commissioners with a final summary report, a review on our uh meeting on the tenth of October that we normally use for the QA process. Of the recommendations as they'll all be signed off and complete by that uh that point. And we'll look to communicate a final publication to us that internally and externally. I'll see if that's in. Uh that will also be followed up by our review of our ten K volts report. So one of our recommendations was to complete the ten K volt. Annually, we combine the recommendations from our staff and the feedback into these recommendations and we're going to provide staff internally and externally with an update. On that feedback and our completion of those key areas, many of them align to the work that we've currently. So that's our half year report for the recommendations uh to the commissioners.
Thank you, John, Neil. Comments?
Just wanted to recognize the the progress that's being made. It's really, really positive. And it just shows like significant complimenting behind the implementation. So I just want to put on record my thanks since. Uh you know, the the process is a really robust one.
Yes.
Uh so I think that's, you know, that is testament uh as well to the. You know, the the levels of assurance that we can take that what we've said we've done, we have done.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to agree with what you said. Think that when we arrived. What a recommendation was, what data we had and what systems we had to be able to prove anything. And you look at the. The stuff that Amory's got down there and how we can see all these things with all these, you know, you've come a long way.
In a relatively short time.
Yeah.
It's it's easy to do.
Yeah, if I may, um so so that report generally focuses on unacceptable behaviour, I think, is the uh. Um and and that was the major thrust of the phenomenal report. Um one of, one of my contentions is that isn't culture, that is unacceptable behaviour. And the culture is much, much broader and you'll have seen in the uh the culture report. So uh um control, that I have a much broader view of it. I was with these uh these these other cultures specialists at uh. At at Anglia Ruskin University, they could cur. Um and and something that hasn't come out of that report, I think is really important, that Dom's team have been doing, is the spirit of fire. Um and the spirit of fire is, it it it's a dual tap of. Looking at our culture and really developing our culture and also preparing for the uh the big celebration of thirty years of South Wales Fire and Rescue Service. And so that's considering things like uniform symbols, identity celebrations of our organisational heroes. Traditions, uh the way we socialize, the processes and practices we have, our humour, our slang. Um and freedoms that we give our people. And um and and it's absolutely fascinating, I find, in in this organization to come into a uniform service in which lots of people, we can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this, you can't do that. And over time, almost infantilizing your your workforce.
Yes.
Which I think is horrific. So you're not allowed to go and park a a fire engine uh outside St. Bruce's. Wow, why not? Because that's an engagement opportunity.
Hmm.
So we're doing a piece of work and this is, this is taking place incrementally. So Becky's leading all that, we've got a whole team of people who are working in the background. And this is the positive side of culture and how do you really supercharge an organization and you bring an organization up. Um but also the the ops teams uh are are looking at, how how do we start deliver things? And so for example, um the. Uh allowing people to have their families onto a station to create a family friendly station. Which you you can feed your children. Wow, because we didn't allow them to do that. So there are all sorts of things like that, which I think will help contribute to the work that Lauren's doing, which will uh help bring. That families, that family feeling back into the fire service that existed many years ago. I think over time, risk aversion was something that sort of stopped people doing things, shut down bars, probably a good thing. But then when you get into some of the things, you can't have the pool ted, you can't do this, you can't do that. It becomes corrosive after a while.
Yes.
So we're looking at the things, how how do we liberate our people? How do we celebrate the humour of the firefighter? How do you celebrate the humour of the people? We support the firefighters. So that's an interesting piece of work, I think. I don't think there's anyone else in the sector who's doing that.
Just thinking, it's a good, it's a good PhD uh. Investigation, I'm just, I'll make a note of that. The the single, thirty five years in teaching and the 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 single liberated me. Was literally, it was literally in the last two or three years of my service, but I was allowed to go off site when I had a free lesson. Because you weren't allowed to go off site, which is crazy, you know, so you could pop to the dentist or pop to the doctors or whatever, you were allowed that hour. Believe it or not, but that makes makes such a difference. So I'm glad we're looking into what makes such a difference.
But there are some of our own policies.
Yeah.
That stop us doing this, will will cancel.
Yes, change the forms, change the policies, make life better. Um and. Any further comments for Dominic? No?
Thank you.
Um I I I found these reports for information that extremely useful, so thank you very much. For the presentation of them. What I would like, please, or what we would love. Next Friday, we have a meeting with our funders and council leaders. And um for all the reports, could I ask for some bullet points so we can update the leaders? And when I say bullet points, I literally mean three or four things that we can just quickly go through with the leaders to give them a flavour. Um because although this is, you know, this is a minute of meeting, a public meeting and online. Um they're very busy people, they've got a lot of things on. So if we can assure them that we're assured of what's going on. So if we can assure them that we're assured of what's going on, if those could be fed into Christian, please, by next Thursday, so we've got the meeting on Friday. You know, please, just three or four things, yeah, that's all. Thank you. And on that nine point seven forward work programme. Andrew, I think we cut this down somewhat, haven't we?
Yes, we have, well, we've combined reports that were going to be next month with your meeting in December.
Yeah, eighteen to seven, three to four, until the fifth of December, yeah.
I don't know, we might, there may be a need to add other reports, but I'm I'm not aware at this moment. I think the title of the Independent Remuneration Panel Report, okay, that's just been released, hasn't it? Can you remind me who that report is by? It has just landed the consultation, I don't think we need to respond to that consultation because the consultation will close before that fifth of December meeting. But I will send it to you, commissioners, anyway, just to.
Okay, it was very helpful for budget setting purposes to know what the analysis is going to be next year.
Yeah.
Okay, anything further on this from anyone, please?
Say two, three, three, we've got twenty seven for March twenty six, second one, that's, we've got the setting of KPIs that way, that means we do it for the December meeting.
This one, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also depending on the people, like later on today, we've got a report on sickness, which I think will require probably reports come to board at some point. Maybe, no, we'll wait to see how the report goes today, when we need to feed it, maybe December.
I think they should, we have put on the agenda a starting wave for kind of like alerting the main board on issues that the committee has come across that put the fear of the main board, so it might be an opportunity to utilize that again, right, and draw attention to everyone that's discussed it, people today.
Okay, good point. Right, okay, thank you. Point ten, consider any items of residence? Dean Durgant, you have none, so I'd like to thank you for your attendance, you have the award, and I declare the meeting closed, thank you.